Um, anything else on South Street Greg that you wanted to, or no?
Nope, just wanted to make sure you're all aware of it and there will be more coming in the future.
Thank you. All right, anything else under highway? Okay, is there a motion to move into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything?
So, nothing really, I didn't really have anything here. I do have my report in here that has kind of some water related stuff, but this was really, I thought, more for just sort of updates on how operations were going and things. So, I didn't have anything necessary to put in here, but we will be getting the reports from Simons in the near future, plus anything that I have. I have included, like I said, most of it I included into my manager's report. And if we want to break it out into individual departments, we can do that. I just tried it this way to see if possibly it would work that way. Be a little cleaner.
All right. Does anybody else have anything? All right, is there a motion to move out of water? Go into the Sewage Commissioners?
Oh.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Probably the same in the Sewage Commission.
Right.
Greg, we're, I'm sure they're experiencing low water flows down there. That's not causing any issues, is it?
I haven't heard anything.
Good, good.
Are you having issues with your water pressure or water flows?
No, 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 no. I'm just thinking, you know, what's coming into the plant? Well, I guess I'm ahead of, I'm at the sewer.
We're in the sewer.
You know, we haven't had any storm water to speak of, so. I was just wondering if the low water was giving them problems.
Haven't heard anything. Haven't heard anything at all about it. And all their testing has come back just fine. You know, they're still within their parameters there, so I haven't heard of anything at all.
Super.
Probably good. That's helping to keep the lagoons down the level in the lagoons, so.
I actually do have an update on that. I just got an email back from Simon about the lagoons and basically, I don't know where I put it. Basically, he said they quit making the other ones, so they're trying to find a new material for the liners. So they're still in the process of researching what liner they want to use.
What about, I thought we were gonna patch this one.
Yeah.
That's part of it. The patching that they're talking, that's the material they're talking about. They're trying to find, apparently they're trying to find a patchy material that's adequate to patch what they have, and then I think they're looking for a long term to fix the entire thing. That's my understanding. I'll get ahold of them and find out a little bit more specifics, but I asked the question, you know, what's going on with the lagoons? And what I got back was, the materials that we were gonna use, Kerry's up here, we got Kerry. The materials that we have are not, no longer being made. We're looking into alternatives.
Because wouldn't the best time to do it be now when the water is low, so that it's less of a, you know?
The heat might be a little too much, might be a fall type thing, I don't know. But I'll talk with them and get a little more clarification on exactly where everything sits.
Okay.
Hi Kerry.
Tom, do you have anything else on that?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to move out of sewage and go back to the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so is there anything, I don't think anybody had anything last time for the reports, standing committees? Because you weren't meeting through July, right, most of you?
Right.
Mosquito District did meet, but nothing out of the ordinary. They sent us the bill that we owed them the $3,000, and I'm sure that's somewhere in the in the stack here. I didn't see, I did see it somewhere in the warrants.
It's in there, yeah.
Has anybody seen any, like, a real decrease in mosquitoes?
I think because of the dryness, you know, no rain and what have you.
They've certainly had to spray less this year, it's. Which is.
I don't feel like mosquitoes were a problem this year, like, they were, I mean, there seems like there's more bees and horseflies this year than there were.
Mosquitoes are bad here, and they're spiking up again, but I live near water, so.
Yeah. Are they done spraying? Are they spraying again?
I haven't been notified.
As needed, whenever the traps are full, and they will spray.
Yeah, they usually give us, you know, a couple, five, six hours notice, and then they.
Right. Okay. Nothing on Beaver Pond, because we met the last time, so I reported out on that. Anybody else have any committee meetings that you're on that you've met within the last two weeks?
Transportation Council meets Thursday night, so.
Okay. All right. Okay, review of the bills. So, we're gonna go back to having me sign them in town offices since none of us are still here together, correct? Did anybody have any questions on any of them?
One of the pages didn't have any totals down at the bottom. Was there any reason on that, Greg?
No, what, where you at? Which page?
Twenty-six.
Oh geez. No, I don't know why it didn't.
I didn't see a total on that page, but.
It might have just not gotten, yeah, it might have just got cut off. I don't know. What, what was it? What's on the page? I don't have the packet.
Okay. Item is the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, yeah, it's probably just the last page it didn't get.
And the top one was, well, the second one down is Aldrich and Elliott. And the rental for these, the vault, our temporary vault.
Yeah, that's, that's the bulk of them is on that page.
Right, yeah, I didn't see a total at the bottom.
Unless, no, you know what, it's on the first, the second page is first.
Ah, you got transposed?
Do you, do you have the total, total, Greg?
Yeah, the total, total's right here. I don't know if you can see that or not, but it's backwards. Let me just tell you what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I did see that number. So, it just got backwards somewhere.
Yeah, somehow it just got, yeah, I don't know how that happened, but.
Hey, so is it okay for me to sign these tomorrow?
Sure, yes.
All right. Okay, Pittsburgh Police Operations Discussion.
Yes, so, thank you for all the questions. I compiled those all into a couple pages here. Met with John last week and showed him these, and he went back and talked with his, I'm assuming, police chief or somebody that's involved, and these are the responses that I got back. And so, what he's asking for is just kind of fill out where we're at. If this is something that we're interested in and we want a full-blown proposal, he can do that, but he doesn't want to waste his time and anybody else's time if we're not really interested in it. The grant kind of hinges on whether or not we participate, but, you know, it is what it is at this point. But we just need to, at some point here, we need to just kind of let him know if we want to move forward on an actual proposal or if we're not interested at all at this point.
Hey Greg, comment from anybody? Your thoughts on this?
I'm concerned about a four-year contract and on something that we don't really know anything about, and I see they can't provide us with a copy of the grant. And I took the liberty the other day, I think it was actually before the last meeting, and I called Josh Webb, our fire chief, and he says they have a great rapport and working relationship with the Sheriff's Department, and he would, he would be in favor of staying where we are.
The very first question here, they run us around in circles. They don't, you know, who dispatches the officer? And they don't really say, they don't give us a phone number. They don't tell us they have a dispatcher, who's gonna be dispatching. They're vague on a lot of this stuff.
Yes. And there was some question that there might be added cost to it if the state police, there was some question about that, that there would be. And I'm really kind of leery of a four-year contract, and I don't know, it just doesn't sound, and it sounds though we're gonna get less possible time. We're gonna get just forty hours, and now we have the capability if some, if the officers in West Rutland and something serious happens here, that he'll, he'll finish up in West Rutland as soon as he can if he's in the middle of something and come over. So, I think in actuality, we're getting more coverage than the forty hours.
Yeah, I'm not in agreement at all with the four-year contract, what happened in four years.
Right.
Also, the fact that we can't see the grant, that's just, that's, I understand that at all. You can look at a grant, you know, it doesn't mean you're fitting to anything, but you can see the grant application and see what's required of it. And as far as like the, you know, locking into the rates, they said they would unless, you know, they go into like a two to four percent annual inflation rate. But what about insurance? As we know, this year is what killed us is health insurance. And if that happens, and all of a sudden we get an officer, and that officer is maybe all of a sudden single and then married, and their insurance goes up, or, you know, there's situations with different officers over those four years, that cost could escalate if it includes the health insurance being bumped up way up high.
Yeah, wasn't there some mention there? I'm trying to think. The, at the end of four years, it was gonna be, we're gonna have to come up with a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars? I'm trying to find it.
Well, in the last part, on the last page, the grant basically gives us a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand over three years, which I read as forty-one thousand a year for three years, so we come up with no money from them on the fourth year. That's the way I read it.
Yeah, I think there's just, I think there's too many questions here to be tied into a four-year contract that really hasn't been spelled out. You know, I have nothing against Pittsburgh and what have you, but I just don't think it's in our best interest.
You actually can go online. There's the 2020 Cops Hiring Program Awards, Award Owners Manual, that's a hundred-and-fourteen pages that you can go on and read, and it talks about the grant and spells out most of the questions that you're asking. Not that I'm disagreeing with anything you're saying, but that I'm surprised that they didn't tell you that was on there that you could read. And it's interesting that they don't, it does discuss a great deal in there about supplanting, which was what the sheriff talked about, and if you read it, I don't believe you can accept the grant anyway, because you would be supplanting the Rutland County Sheriff's Department, and that is a direct violation of this grant agreement.
Thank you Lisa. Does anybody else have any comments on it? Concerns or opinions?
They don't seem very interested. You know, the answers to these questions just come across as they don't want us.
So you just had a guest join. I don't know if you want to see if they're here for the, for the cops grant.
Did you see the guest who joined?
Yes.
Is there a name?
William.
Shado.
Shado.
Hello.
Hello. Hi Bill.
Hey Bruce.
Were you on Bill for any specific?
No, I just, just saw a chance to jump by and, and so I thought I would see what was going on.
Okay, thank you. Did you get that Lisa? You got his name right?
I would just second.
I think Ben's trying to say something.
I would just echo.
Ben, you sound like you're.
I would just echo the same.
Yeah, you're six foot under the water.
His video is locked up as well.
Rather than being six foot under. I would just echo the same concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or concerns? Opinions? So, we, do you want to make a motion to basically not go forward, or do we need a motion? Just basically say we don't want to go forward with the full proposal? Stay where we're at for now?
Yes, I would make a motion that we thank them for their efforts and at this time, we're, it probably won't work for us. Something to that effect.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let him know.
Greg, you'll talk to.
I'll talk to John tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, it's Sheriff Department Report. Any questions on this?
No, not really.
Okay. All right. All right, the revised rink management contract. Everybody got that in their pocket?
Yes, yes.
So, everything on here is the same except the last paragraph, which is in italicized, is just adding in the the COVID response, the additional cleaning requirements and the fee that we are charging now. So I wanted to just sort of make this more of an official thing, and I changed the date to July twenty-seventh. I don't really know how, in the past, how long this is, you know, this is supposed to go from October to October, or what it was, but something else we should maybe talk about down the road is what the actual terms of this contract are. But what this is here basically is just explaining why we're charging that hundred dollars and how that hundred dollars is dispersed out to the rink managers for their additional work.
Was it one last year this way, December through March?
It was signed in October.
Right, that's what I thought.
So I don't know if that meant it went from October, I mean, it's an annual contract, so I guess it goes from the contract's signature date, since there was nothing else on it. But I would like to clarify it in the, in the future. Maybe I'll add a sentence in here that it's an annual contract and it's from whatever to whatever.
Sure.
So, also, being an annual contract, shouldn't it be changed from December to December? You know, like a full year, because this is, this is not a full year.
Right, but we're on a fiscal year too, so we, that's what they're running. They tried to make it overlap into a fiscal year, I think, because it's the, it's the winter hours, or the winter times. But when I talk with Megan, and I actually want to do, we can do it either way. We can do it on a calendar year, we can do whatever we want, because she wants to continue to do programming at that, that rink. So I think it needs to be a little bit more than just, you know, it's not real specific in here, I guess. As far as exactly, all the time, and she's gonna have a lot more going on, so I'd like to edit this to make it more of a, an official or a date certain type of a contract. Maybe it starts January first and ends December thirty-first.
Right.
For today's discussion, this is, this is really more just about the pandemic response, the additional cleaning for the pandemic response.
Yeah, yeah, because it might have to be changed, because if it expires in, if it went October, I don't think it went October to October though, I think it probably went October to June thirtieth. Then it would have to cover those months that she's not, now that she's there year-round doing events, then we gotta just probably, you know, double-check with her and Brian and how they want that.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, and as long as the COVID thing's covered too, that's good.
Yep.
So, do you want to bring it to, just kind of review it with her first, and then we'll come back for full, final approval on this?
Well, I have already, I have already shown her this copy.
Okay.
But I can bring it back if you want to just make, if I want me to make all the revisions to it and bring it back as, as one official copy. We can do that. We have time. I was trying to get this in before the church was gonna start utilizing the facility, and I think they're not gonna do anything probably for the next two weeks or so.
Okay.
I think I've got time to get this cleaned up and brought back for a final.
We could make a motion tonight to approve the contract with them as the, you know, managers with the intent that it could be amended to reflect the certain dates.
Yes, since you had that discussion, yeah.
Want to do that, that we were kind of covered, knowing that it's at least them in charge for the next.
And I can actually, that way it can be, I can make those small changes to it as well, and it's still approved. I don't have to bring it back to you again.
All right.
Sure.
Maybe prove it as amended.
Okay, is there a motion to approve then?
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm a no.
You're a no?
I'm a no, because I would rather have a solid contract that we're gonna agree to than to have one that we're gonna say yes to, and then we don't know what it says. So I'm saying.
We're agreeing to this contract as is. The only thing that's gonna be amended is those dates as to when it will be into effect.
And the date will be, we can set the date, the date will be, and my thought was January first to December thirty-first.
Right, and I think the motion tonight is more to approve the contract with them as managers of the rink again, that we're actually hiring them to be.
I'm not sure that's what the motion was. What was the motion Lisa?
Sorry, sorry. I have the motion to revise the rink manager's contract with the addendum adding COVID response, cleaning, and fee. Town manager will meet with rink managers to clarify and verify contract length and dates.
Is this gonna require a signature?
No.
To this contract?
Well, I sign it, yeah. It's the managers as well as you give me a three to sign it.
No, but rink, the rink managers. Historically, the rink manager's contract is signed by them, and the contract ran from October fifteenth to March fifteenth. Last year, Stan came and said that Megan wanted to do programming, and that was via a one-dollar contract, or one dollar was offered, but no official contract was written with the thought process, I believe, that a contract would be developed where you would be the manager of the rink facility, and then there would be separate responsibilities based on the season. We had that when Megan came and they talked about doing movies and things like that, so.
So, maybe it'd be in our best interest to to just make, you know, give me some ideas of what you want, and I'll clean this up and finalize it and bring it back, and we'll approve it as a final document.
I'd rather approve as a final document. That's why I'm saying no.
Again, it's not gonna slow anything up, because the church isn't gonna be in there for a few weeks anyway. And that's really the whole reasoning behind the COVID, to have it for the church.
And I'd like to see the contract run from, you know, June to, June to June there, so.
Right.
Your budgeting.
Correct, that's what I'd rather see too.
Okay.
Although I know it was last, because we're not, it's not gonna run June to June if we already, if it expires in October, so we'll have to do it from exactly the date that we did the last one, and then just do it a twelve-year cycle instead of a six-month cycle.
You mean a twelve-month cycle?
Yeah.
So we're gonna do a six-month cycle instead of a twelve-month cycle?
That's what I meant.
Okay, I got it. I'm like, wait, what?
Yeah, and, and, you know, because this is amended, it'll be amended to just finalize the current contract, as you will.
Yeah.
And we'll do a new one.
Okay, so we won't approve it tonight then, or does everybody still want to approve it as it is? With those dates just being the only alternative to change for the next meeting?
Why don't we wait?
Bruce, Ben?
Whatever, doesn't, I think we pretty well know what we're gonna do, so, but I don't have.
Hold it off to the next meeting in August. Okay. Outdoor display, discarded items, and the ordinance discussion. Was there anything else Greg, other than that, what I was talking about with the yard sales?
Well, I know Tom in the past had talked about junk cars and wanting to come back and revisit the junk car concept, and that's why I included the entire ordinance in here. I don't know if this now is the time for discussion on this or not, but you know, this is everything, I guess. This includes all the, the storage of debris or whatever you want to call it, refuse on the side of the road, as well as the junk car issue that we were gonna talk about.
So, I also want to add that I talked to Mark Shea on Saturday regarding the use of the transfer station, and if that could, these things like old washing machines, et cetera, could be brought to the transfer station. Because at one time, they could not. They are now accepting all items again. The only thing they need an appointment for is hazardous waste.
What did we agree on with the free stuff after yard sale? We went over that last.
I thought we limited it to being in the yards.
Five days.
A week.
Yeah, that's.
Stan told me five days.
That's great with me.
Yes.
So how are we gonna enforce this, because there's stuff that people called me about complained and.
Yes, and your ordinance does not say five days. There is a reference to five days in there, but it's not, doesn't really meet the the definition of what we're using it for. And here, and here, the way I read this, is that it actually prohibits anything in the right of way, of being left in the right of way, for any amount of time.
I, didn't we, what's the date on that? Because I thought we did this already.
February twenty-second of twenty.
That's when it was last amended. It's getting darker and darker.
So, I don't know if you can hear me, but it shall be unlawful to place discarded or abandoned junk or one or more junk motor vehicles on property in a place where any such item is visible from a traveled way of a highway or visible to an abutting property. Blah, blah, blah. Any such item placed, discarded, or abandoned is hereby declared to be a public nuisance. Shall be unlawful to place discarded, abandoned junk of one or more cars upon the land of another without the consent when that such item is visible from a traveled highway or visible from an abutting property owner from a position abutters. That's a nuisance. It shall be unlawful for a property owner or tenant to display discarded items for more than five calendar days in any three-month period. So, I guess that's what we were using? Was that the? But. Okay. Shall be unlawful for a property owner or tenant to display discarded items for more than, for more than five calendar days in a three-month period. Or, or on or before the six calendar days, such items will be removed from display.
Correct.
That's the only thing in here that references that five days.
Right, and that's, that's what it was, because I don't think it existed before that.
So, does, so has that been interpreted by the select board as meaning within the right of way as well?
Well, I would think, because it doesn't reference right of way, but the majority, I think the reason it was raised in the first place is because it was on the right of way. It was kind of like off the street and not in someone's. the right of way, it was kind of like off the street and not someone's property, you know, like on the front lawn.
Right.
Off a main street and they were just piling stuff there each week.
Yep.
That's what was happening and that's the situation now too as well. It's not on someone's property.
Yeah, we've got that situation on South Street and we had, what was it, North Street or?
Yeah, North Street.
Last year and.
So my question is, what do we do? Do we contact, I think last year Stan contacted them, correct?
Yeah, there is a little section for enforcement, we'll just have to follow that. It, it's actually, it says a municipal ticket will be served on the property owner, so part of the problem is if this is sitting on the curb, you know, underneath a stop sign, who's the property owner? If it's, what I've seen, it's like a, a kid's play toy or something like that. I don't know how we're going to determine who the owner is. And I don't know, I'll have to read through here, I'm not sure if I have the authority to give a municipal ticket, I don't think I do.
I think if we know who it is, a courtesy call would be in play just because a lot of people may not know this ordinance exists.
Right, sure.
Yes.
So it's the zoning administrator or the municipal law enforcement official?
Well.
DE.
Important. Okay, so Article three of our ordinance says it's to be a municipal ticket by the enforcement officer. But then A, and then B says upon receiving written notice from the select board to do so, the property owner and or occupant of property upon which any junk or motor vehicle discovered in violation. So it would be the select board. Should be screened from view if the owner of the junk motor does not remove, 30 days.
So in the past, the select board had to find the property owner in violation of the ordinance, a letter was sent and then if they had 30 days, I think it is, if they didn't correct the violation, then a ticket was given by or was supposed to be given by the sheriff department. That, that's the process we've gone through for junk and junk vehicles, we have not gone through the process with junk on the curb.
Right, so the way this reads, Article three is our enforcement. So a municipal ticket will be served on the property owner by a enforcement officer. Article two C, which is that three, that five day piece. So I think that what we're discussing today, which is the stuff that's left on the curb sort of thing, that would be, that would be a ticket, municipal ticket by the designated enforcement officer. The other section where the select board does, like Lisa was talking about, that would be for the larger things, the cars and things like that, that they have 30 days to get rid of it. But for, for C, and why you have this ordinance, but for, on page three, under Article two, the letter C is the one that applies to the, the municipal ticket.
And can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
So enforcement officer in the ordinance is decide, is defined as any municipal official, police officer, health officer, et cetera, appointed by the select board to enforce the provisions of this ordinance.
There you go, yep.
That's on page two, under definitions.
Yep, yep, under E.
When we had this problem, Stan just sent a letter and it was, it was resolved.
Yep.
There's only one time that we had to get a little stronger with somebody, that I recall.
I, I think a, a letter or a phone call would be appropriate and then.
I did too.
Yep.
Because a lot of people, you just make a phone call to, they're going to go, oh, I didn't know.
Exactly.
There was a limitation on me putting stuff on the. It's been a Procter thing forever.
Right, and so do you have an address that you're referring to?
Someone's just told me it's on South Street. But right in front of the cemetery, cemetery.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Oh, okay, and then there's another one, I think, on the way out of town towards Pittsburgh. It sort, it seems to change all the time, there's a, what's that last road right before the town limits?
They both have.
Newton Street, that one seems to always has something new out in front of it, but.
They do.
Yeah, okay, I will do some, I'll do some, some investigation and, and write a letter.
Okay. All right, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey. All right. All right. You have on here monument cleaning.
I had that added because last year we talked about revisiting, cleaning that monument in the park this year.
Okay.
And we haven't revisited that and it doesn't look good.
Yeah, because then we go, we went out and got quotes for that.
Yes, we did.
Yes, they were pretty substantial as I remember.
They were.
They are, but you know, we just spent a lot of money on sidewalks and I find that leaving the monument in the shape that it's in kind of disgraceful. So I, I would like to find out again how much it costs and figure out how we can get it cleaned.
Okay, we can pull out those quotes and then see budget wise what it looks like for this year.
Yeah, I've got them right here.
Okay.
$6,800.
Especially we need to consider it if we have Fall Festival. I mean, we really wanted to get it done before Memorial Day, but COVID happened, but if there is going to be possible, maybe, probably not, but we, we definitely should have that cleaned up. It just doesn't look good.
So.
And the last, last time it was cleaned, it was by a private citizen, she paid to have it cleaned.
So I have the quote or an estimate from Procter Marble Company for $6,800, that was August of 2019.
So maybe could you reach out to them just to see if they still stand by that? Or maybe they do since we're in such a bad situation.
I can do that.
Would you try and dicker with them a little bit, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that was a ceiling of it too.
It was.
After it was cleaned, yeah.
Yeah, there was a little more to it than just the cleaning, it was more of a rehab, a full rehab.
Right.
Yes, it was, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Managers report.
So this is my first whack at, at sort of the idea that I had about more of a consolidated sort of a report. What I typically would do is just go through kind of some of the, I guess, the highlights of this and not, not necessarily go through the whole thing because I, I'm sure you don't want to hear everything that's, that's on here, you can read. But then I'd like to afterwards maybe just find out what you think, if you like it, if you don't like it, if you want to see something different. So the highway department, there, we did do some asphalt patching up on Park and Larson Streets. There are also some utility cuts that have been patched up. There are still some more to be done, but we're waiting on the, the asphalt plant to, to go back to producing the, the three eighth inch mix. They've been working quite a bit, most of their asphalt's been going to the, the projects in West Rutland, but we're hoping to get back on track with them and get some more of those areas done. We did a bunch of mowing of the right of ways, I don't know if you've noticed that and it's already sort of growing, it's already growing back again and probably will need to be cut in the next month or so, but they, they did do that. The Beaver Pond Trail, I met with VHB, who I'm sure you know is the, the design people for that, that trail, that, that shared use trail. And there's an issue with the, the location of the trail is on the old railroad bed and there is a possibility that that old railroad bed might have some contaminated soils.
Are you talking about the bike path?
I am.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because there is a Beaver Pond Trail thing that we're talking about, but that's not it.
It's the trail from, basically in front of the office here all the way through the, the propane company and then back to the Beaver Pond. So there are some, there is a possibility for some contaminated soils, so I've been working with them to try to figure out a way to, to get around that. If we don't have to dig, then we're not into this potential contaminated soil. The reason why we want to avoid that is, number one, it's contaminated, and number two, it's not grant eligible. So we don't want to have any additional expenses that the grant won't pay for. So I will hopefully know something, something fairly soon as to what we're going to do, it's, it's not going to be a relocation or anything like that, it's just a matter of if the grades work, it might be built up a little bit as opposed to being excavated down.
This question was asked of the engineer when, you know, quite a time ago because of the creosote and et cetera, and they said they would not be disturbing any of the railroad bed. They would be removing the steel for salvage and elevating fill over the, the creosote.
Yes.
So hopefully that's the plan still, that sounds like where the, what the plan was, but there was some areas where with the current design, there would be some excavation required, so there was some concern. I think that we're going to nip that pretty quickly because the Procter gas has been very, Judy has been very good about being open to moving her fence a little bit, which will allow us to get away from some of the great issues that we have in that area and have to excavate through there. So I think we'll get that taken care of just with a, a simple moving of the fence, but we're just trying to eliminate everything we can because like I said, these are expenses that are not covered by the grant. So I'll let you know if there are any areas that they find out, but I, I don't think we're going to have any significant costs here. There's also another public meeting that, that will be scheduled probably somewhere mid to the end of August about the project, once it sort of gets finalized. So we'll be moving forward on that. As far as the water depart, well, so and then also John will be doing monthly activity reports as well, moving forward. I'm sure he's already been doing something like that, but I, I wanted to add a report to, to my report as well so that we've got a monthly report on the activities of the, of the department. Water Department, Contract Six is pretty much finished. I just sent the next to last pay application to the state for reimbursement. Once we pay the last bill, we'll send the last request to them and get this put to bed. The only thing that's hanging out on this one will be in the spring, the contractor will be coming back and, and doing some of the things that didn't take very well. They still have a one year warranty period on the project, so anything that, that pops up over the winter time, they will be back in the spring to address. Again, Simons will be submitting a monthly report as well, it looks like they've been a little bit late on a lot of their, some of their reporting in the past, so I'm going to try to get on them to, to get that to me early enough to get it into the packet like it should be. The last, at the last meeting, they were a couple of days late on submitting their report, so it didn't get into your packet, I, I had to add it to it at the end. Wastewater. Again, the lagoon liner area was originally awaiting a quote and now I understand that they're for the, for the liners and the patching, they're waiting for a, a different material, I don't know what the actual truth is completely behind that, but I will reach out to them and, and find out exactly where we're at with that. The Willow Street Pump Station, we, at the last meeting, you signed the engineering services agreement. That has gone to the state and the state has approved that. Aldridge and Elliott has now begun to do the design on that pump station, on that project, and we'll be moving forward on that. The clerk office, everything is, is moving, moving well, and there's been five change order requests, which equaled into one actual change order. And it ended up being that there was a lot of rock excavation that didn't have to happen, so we got a sizable credit. So the, the change orders were, were actually, once the change orders were all done and the credit was put against the additions, it was still a credit of about, I think it was 5,000, no, $3,000, $3,500, something like that. We have actually add back in air conditioning because that was eliminated from the project. So at the last meeting, we did talk about that and, and putting that back in. We will be getting some credits from, what is it, Energy Vermont, I believe, and Re Mount Power will be giving us some credits as well on that to cover some of the cost of that, that installation. The rest of these things, the Procter pool is going well from what I understand, I haven't heard any issues with COVID or, or anything other than that. The water quality is really good, we're, we're continuing to get the testing in and it's all really good. So that's, that's my report, let me know what you think, if you have any questions, any comments, anything you'd like to see added to the report, I'm, I'm all ears.
I just want to add for the Procter pool that they're going to do, John I think is going up there tomorrow with the fire hose, hooking it to the fire hydrant.
That's right.
Trying to kind of push some water into the pool just because it's become kind of stagnant and just kind of get it flowing and stuff, just to see if it's going to have any help.
Yeah, he thought it was two or three inches low, so he's going to try to add some water to it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Greg, just when, we used to have a, a water main into the pool and a valve that we, we didn't have to run fire hoses. Would you just check with the water department on that, please, sometime?
I think that was disconnected, Tom.
I think so too.
That was part of the disconnect, I believe, with the other tank, when the other tank went online.
I think that's.
That's too bad.
I think for some reason that's the, it was over by Altsley's in, in that area.
That's what I remember.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll clarify it, let you know.
Okay. Anything else?
Any, any other, any, how's the report, is it okay? Do you, are you okay with this format or would you prefer something different?
No, this is fine. I think. Just gets a good overlay without having to.
And, and do you want it every month or every two weeks? How would you like it done? I've got, you know, water and sewer there every month and I've got John doing it every month, because every two weeks is, I don't know how much actually we would add, but.
I honestly think once a month is fine unless there's something that comes up that needs our attention or, you know, that wasn't planned, it wasn't, you know, part of the routine.
Okay.
The month, the week before.
Right.
I missed, I think, the Beaver Pond discussion because I couldn't get on what happened there.
We didn't really have a Beaver Pond discussion. It was just, just in my report is all that that was, so you were included in all of our discussions on the Beaver Pond.
Yeah.
All right, have we, I am on my phone, I had to download this app again, so I see nothing. So where in the agenda was the Beaver Pond about the floating docks? Have we gotten to that? Did I miss that?
No, so, oh, I know where you're at, so that was, yes, I'm working on that, that's going to be an encroachment permit or something that I've been working with VLCT on. I know what you're talking about, yes, 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 yes.
That was his management report, Carrie, it wasn't like on the agenda, it was, it was in his management report.
Right, so what do you mean an encroachment? Because I'd just rather not have any docks on Beaver Pond.
Well, then we're going to have to.
Then I want one on Beaver Pond. That's what's going to happen.
Well, whatever direction we want to take, I can, we can do that, we'll just have to, well, I'll have something for you at the next meeting. If you choose that we want to just tell everybody no, we're not going to do it, that's fine. At the last talk we had, the last discussion was that we were going to look at a way to, I thought we were going to look at a way to allow them to be there, but have a, a legal way for them to be there.
I wasn't looking for that, but.
What is the consensus? Just give me direction, I'll, I'll make it happen.
I don't know, I mean, I've been a Procter resident for ages and it was just part of a homeowner's, that's what they did, you know? I just, I mean, I think, I'm fine with it if they're maintained and they're not abused and there's not a ton of stuff piled up around there. That's my opinion though.
I'm against it because I think it's a liability because it is a town pond on town land and that's like somebody putting their own picnic table in the park. It's the same thing. If we allow one, then we have to allow more.
If, you know, we've only owned the pond a short time, Omea owned it previously. So perhaps they had permission from Omea, they don't have permission from us as far as I know.
Yeah. So we could, because there's actually three pieces of property that are on that side and you know, or, or maybe even four, I haven't looked at the property map, but you might end up having four docks out there. Or rafts.
Right, I mean, it's not part of their land, it's not, they don't have a lake right or a pond right.
I'd be curious what our insurance company said about this. I'd be curious what our insurance company said about this.
I think that's the first question with liability.
And I think Beal, I think Wade spoke about this last year. Uh, because remember, we talked about the stairs, which have been taken down, and the town had to take them down.
Yes.
He did speak about this last year in his report.
Okay.
Yes, he did.
So, and then if you would kindly ask John to, uh, there's a hutch that's left on the side of Beaver Pond, next to a pile of rafts that we cut this weekend, if you could kindly ask him to take that with it, that would be great. It's all sitting right by the road.
Okay.
I'm sure he's seen it.
Excuse me.
All right, I will. Okay, so I will reach out to the, uh, to specifically to Wade and just find out what the liability looks like on that. And then we'll, I'll, I'll get back with you on, on what we're, you know, what the liability is, and where we're at. Is that, is that what you want?
Sure.
And we'll decide how to move forward?
Right, because it's not just the liability, what if somebody wants to swim out to that dock and jump off it? Then the people that put the dock out there are gonna have a problem with that, and they don't really have any lawful means to say you shouldn't be on that dock, because that dock's not even on their pond. Town pond.
I was referring more to docks, those are rafts.
So raft.
More about a dock, a dock from the, um, like from their lawn, from the lawn out to the, you know, wa, into the water.
And let's see what Wade has got to say.
Yeah, I'm gonna know it shouldn't be there, because if you invite one, you have to invite others, and they're not open for everybody, and that pond is for everybody. That'd be like somebody living next door to the Procter pool and putting out their own stuff. We wouldn't be having that.
It's not really the same, but.
How is that not the same?
I'm just going back from, you know, it's just, again, from our last meeting to this meeting, let's make Procter the most unfriendly town to live in, you know, and I'm not saying.
I don't think that is unfriendly at all.
I'm not saying things have just changed because of liability and things like that, but I'm talking when things are, you know, basically grandfathered in, or people are just used to these situations, two families only that ever had a thing there. And I'm just saying.
Not grandfathered in, there's no grandfather again of that.
All right, let's just move on, okay? Greg, you, you check on it, check on the league situation with it, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, the budget report?
So, I tried to make these a little bit more user-friendly. Um, Stan had a fantastic Excel spreadsheet that I just cannot, can't make it work, and I, I will eventually, and it'll be even better, but, but this is, uh, the status report, um, as of July twenty-first. Yellow is, is, is things that are over budget. Blue items are things that were not budgeted, that had expenses that they incurred. So, uh, we will, this, we're, we're getting close to being final, uh, hopefully within the next two to three weeks, we'll have, probably have our, our final budget, um, that I'll present to you, and, and we'll know what we looked at. Uh, our, our unaudited budget will look like hopefully the next few weeks. But if there are any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer them. A lot of these things, these, these numbers unfortunately are not always real accurate, because, um, some of these expenditures are things that are gonna be, they get reimbursed through a grant. Um, but we have to show them as an expense on that side.
Greg, how do I rotate these?
Um, Dan, help me.
Help me.
You should have on the top, there should be on the top right, a little box with an arrow, maybe?
Okay, we got it, yep, thank you.
Yeah.
So, just read this by me again, yellow is what?
Yellow is over budget, and blue are expenses that were not budgeted, so a lot of times it's, you know, grants or, or projects that are gonna be reimbursed, um, through grants and things like that. So, well, the only caution I have is that if you look at the very bottom line, where it says like, for instance, total municipal building is two-hundred-and-eighty-five percent of budget, and that's just, that's not an accurate number, because there are, you know, expenses and things that came out of there that, that probably wouldn't have otherwise. Uh, like under, on highway, that we've got the Beaver Pond path design, we've got Main Street, park sidewalks, there are some expenses that, that are in blue, and that means that they are, they are expenses that we incurred that were not budgeted, but, but they're, most likely they are, um, grant-reimbursable expenses, and then yellow are just things that have gone over budget. And in a few weeks, I will get you the final unaudited number, so that we can see where we were sitting, uh, where we're actually sitting. I'll put it together, and I'll, I'll try to do it with all the, well, I will do it with all of the, uh, the grant revenue coming in. Because they're a little delayed, you know how the state, you know, everybody's behind right now, so. Uh, but I'll try to put something together that shows what the actual numbers look like with all the grant revenues put back into the budget, where we actually stand.
How about the tax rate?
Tax rate, um, the assessor will be in tomorrow to finalize that, we should have it final tomorrow. For a special meeting will be called, possibly, and I'll get with you, Judy, on this, but, uh, we'll, we'll probably have to call a special meeting like on Thursday, if possible, to approve the, the tax rate.
Okay.
It, it seems awful early to see so much overages, and we're only even a month into our budget here.
This was, this was last year's, that's why it's a little confusing. So, yeah, this is last year's, we don't have this year's yet. There's nothing that's really been coded to this year, so I'm just showing you how we final, how we are finalizing last year. So, the way Nemrick works, I went in and tried to get this year's budget stuff, and it's just, there's just not enough coded in there yet to really.
This is last year's budget?
Yes, this is as of July. So, what I'm trying to do is show you how we're finishing up the year.
Last year's fiscal budget.
Last year's fiscal budget, yes.
Well, thank you for telling us.
So, again, uh, the idea will be to, to come back with a, a final with more realistic numbers to it, uh, or actual numbers that have the, uh, the, the grant proceeds and everything included, and then we'll also have the, the, uh, next fiscal year budget started. We'll have enough things that are coded to that, so that we'll start to show how we start, how the expenses are starting to, to incur, um, in the current budget that we're in now. Any questions?
You have questions?
No.
All right, is there any old or new business anybody wants to bring up? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to return.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.